All right, it now being one o'clock, I hereby call the October 22nd, 2025 meeting of the Plimpton Board of Selectmen to order. This meeting is being recorded for public viewing by Area 58. The recording is not considered an official record of the board. The approved minutes of the meeting will serve as the official record of the proceedings. And our first agenda me agenda item this afternoon is going to be the town basement air sampling results.
So, the Board of Health had testing conducted on the basement for a variety of items, and none of the results came back problematic or at a level requiring any further remediation. Generally speaking, there are some moisture issues in the basement that need to be resolved, and that's kind of part of the next agenda item, but I think that we definitely need to take some measures down there, whether it's dehumidifiers, that sort of thing, just to mitigate any potential future moisture issues. But the Board of Health has reviewed the air sampling results. They lifted the order, preventing anybody from accessing the basement, so that space is accessible again, and, you know, we'll go from there as far as mitigating any of the moisture issues. And the report is a public document, and we did release it to, like, all the town employees and, like, anybody who would have a reason to be frequenting it. But if people have questions about it, they're welcome to obtain a copy from the Board of Health.
Excellent. And Board of Health will be kept in the loop once we do the next agenda item and so forth, too?
Yes.
Just to go forward?
Yes.
Did you want to move forward with me getting a dehumidifier?
We can talk about that in the next agenda item.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, moving on. So, the next agenda item will be referring to the Town Properties Committee, the Municipal Buildings Public Water Supply, the Townhouse Basement Moisture Issues, and plans for the new fire station.
So, for these particular projects, the Municipal Buildings Public Water Supply, we do have ARPA funds left that will cover a portion of that work. Since the Town Properties Committee kind of disbanded and then reformed, the prior chairman has been in touch with the new committee members to put them in touch with the project manager to have some kind of continuity of operations as far as that's concerned. But I think that it should formally, as a project, be referred to the new Town Properties Committee and also with some collaboration with our Board of Health. I think that that would be beneficial. As far as Townhouse Basement Moisture Issues, Bree discovered some electrical outlets in some of the rooms that prior did not have any sort of a dehumidifier. I don't know if you think it's premature to move forward with ordering anything yet, if we should refer it to Town Properties, maybe. I had also wondered if it would make sense, once all... So, we're... The Treasurer's Office is disposing of some old records in accordance with Massachusetts' Public Records Retention Laws, and once that's completed in those files, that obviously they're old files in a moisture-filled basement, it's not the best scenario. Once all of that has been removed, I had thought it also made sense possibly to have Servpro come in and just do a one-time cleaning of the basement, and just so that everybody is starting out with a fresh slate down there and then implementing the dehumidifier things. But, you know, I don't know if Town Properties Committee may have some other solutions, so if we want to hold off on ordering dehumidifiers for now. We do have one currently down there running. Yeah, but they weren't all... John Wilhelmsen had went and looked at some of those.
It ran, yeah.
Okay. Was somebody not emptying? There was a problem with the hose and...
It's all fixed.
Okay, all right. So, we have some going now. Sounds like there was a... There was an issue with the hose and somebody emptying it, but...
And from me, there were only, like, two or three specific areas, right?
It was under the stairs that there were a couple hits, that I had wondered if it made sense just to... Once all the stuff is out of there, just to do, give it, like, a one-time cleaning. But we can refer it to TPC and go from there.
And going forward, is there a plan for... I don't want to say proper utilization, but using the space, or is it kind of a free-for-all?
So, it's... There is a plan in place, but I do think we should revisit it and maybe see what different departments' needs are. The Planning Board utilizes it for office space. The Fire Department uses it for storage of medical supplies. We need it at the Townhouse level for storing certain records, and there was even talk about the Police Department potentially having a use for it. So, maybe we can take another look at that after we get everything going and make sure that we're making the best use of the space.
I definitely like the idea of the Servpro part of it, because that way you can kind of monitor it from where it was to where it's going to be. I think it starts it off as almost a control by having a level playing field if we have it certified that it's been cleaned out and so forth. And then, I do think that the Town Properties Committee should look at it and see what we have for equipment that's there, so we don't have to expend anything else. But since there's a wide variety of different sizes and types and of dehumidifiers, it should be looked at, what the space is, where their doors closed or not closed, and how that works within that space for ventilation overall. I think it's a good project for them to look at. And obviously, keeping Board of Health in the loop, because they took the ball and ran with it, which give them kudos for this, for getting it done and making sure that everything's safe down there, so.
Okay. And then, maybe we can put on an upcoming agenda for us, like reconsidering the space and who's utilizing which rooms and which portions of it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then, as far as plans for new fire station, that's kind of self-explanatory. And again, they are... TPC is in touch with the project manager, but also related to the fire station, we did get the citation from the state, from the Department of Labor Standards, their Workplace Safety and Health Program. And these are the violations that they observed when they conducted, excuse me, their inspection of the property. Their inspection was on May 27th of 2025. So, the first violation has to do with a floor vent in the kitchen area that water seeps up through quite frequently, so that needs to be addressed. And that is a more complicated fix, because it involves all of their floor drains, and they have the duct work for the heating system is in the floor, so probably oversimplifying it. They also observed leaks in the ceiling. Some of those leaks are currently being contained with drip pans, like basically disposable aluminum pans, so that needs to be addressed. We have a lot more here in the way of violations regarding the drainage system, water coming up from all the floor drains, heating duct work filled with water from time to time. And we have taken measures to kind of mitigate some of the runoff coming off the field, but it really doesn't, doesn't do what it's supposed to do. This is a big issue. We are going to look at getting pricing in the immediate for putting the duct work into the ceiling. So, we'll find out, you know, I'll obviously report back with how much that's going to be, and I think we're going to have to work hand in hand with TPC on these citation issues. Let's see here. Problem with the electrical panel, it's located, like, basically up against the water piping, and anytime there's condensation or any sort of leaks, obviously, water and electricity don't mix, so that needs to be dealt with. At last check, I had a conversation with the former Town Properties Committee Chair, and he had envisioned that becoming part of the public water supply project, like when we address bringing in the new, the new water service, that that might be a cost that could be absorbed at that time.
Wasn't there some reconfiguring in the panel that needed to be done, too?
You know, now that you say that, didn't...
Wasn't there some...
Wasn't there work done that was a little...
Yeah. Substandard?
Yes, yes. I'll make a note of that. We should probably have a licensed electrician check that out anyway. I remember something involving a generator and some... Yeah, okay. So, we'll check on that, too. And then, there were somewhat obvious issues with, as far as, like, the amount of space in the building. Like, to remind some people, they had to cut out, like, a box essentially in the back wall so that the ladder truck can fit inside. It sounds like there's not enough space between vehicles and things like that. So, I would recommend the corrective action date on this citation, including all of the violations, to mitigate all of them and have corrective actions in place, is November 17th. So, we're going to need the Fire Chief to request an extension on some of those, but before she does so, she and I spoke briefly about it yesterday. We think it would make sense to see what TPC has to say, and also to get pricing, at least on moving that duct work up to the ceiling, so that we can demonstrate to the state what measures we're trying to take in the immediate and what our game plan is as far as correcting all of these items. So, more to come on this, but as part of the fire station, I would recommend that we forward this to them, and I can provide them as well with some of the background info. And I think we'll have to work collaboratively with them to get this done and to work on the Fire Chief's response.
All right. Any further discussion? No? Okay. Make a motion to refer the following projects to the Town Properties Committee for review and action: Municipal Buildings Public Water Supply, Townhouse Basement Moisture Issues, and Plans for New Fire Station, noting that the Town Properties Committee is to update the Board of Health on the current status of the public wells, public water supply project, and that they are to submit monthly updates on all projects as they are actively working on by email to the Board of Selectmen via the Town Administrator. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on. Going to have the next one be review, consider, and vote on a response to the open meeting law complaint against the Board of Selectmen dated October 6th of 2025 filed by Patrick Higgins on file with a town clerk. So, we had a council, Town Council response, and the Board has received an open meeting law complaint filed by Patrick Higgins dated 10/6/2025. Town Council was forwarded a copy of the complaint and prepared a draft response for our review and consideration. We have received a complaint, a copy of the complaint and draft response. If there are no questions, I am looking for a motion to approve the response and authorize Town Council to submit said response on behalf of the Board. Second to the motion?
Yes, sir.
And all those in favor? Aye. All right. Next item on our agenda is an appointment for Mike Slosson as the Area 58 Board Member and Plimpton Representative from 10/22/2025 to 6/30/2026. You have a second?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And on to warrants paid.
Warrants paid of $41,113.82, and this will cover September through and October, the month.
All right, and we have correspondence?
So, correspondence, we have a policy clarification from the Town Clerk's Office, and this is in regards to a change to the bylaws that were made at the annual town meeting back in 2020 concerning licensing. It said in there, this is on dog licensing, it said in the bylaw change that got published with Ecode, it lists in writing $25, but then in parentheses, the numeric value, it lists $50. So, it's a discrepancy. So, the Town Clerk wanted you to acknowledge that her policy going forward until this gets rectified at an upcoming town meeting is to charge the lesser amount, the $25, and then we'll work to get it fixed at the next town meeting.
And that would be a late fee, correct? The $25?
Correct. Well, the late, the late... Yes, yes. So, the late fee will be $25, and that's...
Not $50.
Right.
Okay.
Right. So, the lesser amount. And then, as far as my updates are concerned, we did do a comprehensive reconciliation and reporting effort with the county for all of our ARPA funds, so we were able to successfully close out several ARPA project numbers with them. Currently still on the books, we have the three projects that are for HVAC work at Silverlake, both at the middle school and the high school. So, those are still ongoing, and the way that they're doing that, because we split the cost based on the percentage that we would typically pay with Kingston and Halifax, so the district bills us periodically, and then we pay that. So, we have those funds set aside in our county ARPA account. And then, the other projects still on the books are... There are two ARPA project numbers, and these both pertain to the public water supply project. So, one is for site work and construction, and we currently have $107,010.51 left in that project. And then, the other one is kind of the final phase, it's for pavement and overlay work, and we have $11,484.88 remaining in that project when it's done. So, I think when I refer these projects to TPC based on your direction, for the public water supply, I'm going to ask them to work with the project manager and get us an update pretty quickly of what we think the construction may actually cost, so that we can figure out what we have based on the ARPA funds and what we're going to need to come up with to make up the difference. The ARPA funds have to be fully expended by December 31st, 2026, and ideally, we can put that project... Town Properties would work with the project manager, get that project out to bid sooner rather than later, but probably over the winter, and then they could begin construction in the spring. So, that's what I have on that. I did contact the tree warden again regarding the stumps at the old townhouse. He is in the process of obtaining more quotes for us, so more to come on that. And I just submitted a grant application for Green Communities Program. We're seeking $99,351, and that is for a weatherization project here at the townhouse. It involves weatherization and insulation and some work up in our attic area. And I would like to thank Ross McPherson. He did attend that site visit that day and had a lot of useful feedback as far as what types of projects would make sense and how we could get the most bang for our buck as far as energy savings and having a worthwhile grant application. That's all I've got.
Okay. And moving on to financial reporting and updating, if there is any for today?
Not an update per se. The town accountant did have a new monthly update sent out, but she has not yet followed up with anybody whose spending is not in line with what percentage of the... We are through the fiscal year, so we should have that report from her for our next meeting.
And we had minutes for September 8th and October 6th. Moving to prove the minutes as submitted? I seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And the next stated Selectmen's meetings are going to be on November 5th and November 17th, and some times and so forth to be debated at that point or to be determined.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion, anything else? Mr. Trainer?
Will the documents that you read out be posted with the minutes?
Which documents?
The fire evaluation?
Yeah. Yeah, that's a public record.
Right. Just wanted to make sure.
We can give a copy to the Town Clerk's Office, too.
Mr. Wallace?
Two questions. Replacement of Mark Russo, how does that happen?
That would be a special election, and that would also require funds to be drawn to actually do that. So, at this point, it would have to be a vote by us to actually approve that, but also we have to take into consideration how much time and effort and money it's going to take in order to do that before the next election cycle, which would be in May. So, at this point, that's where we're standing with it, so.
What's your general thought to wait until next?
It seems like it at this point, because the point is, is by the time we try to get things from what I've discerned from people in the town, as far as the townhouse and how the things are going to work as far as an election being created, it wouldn't happen until probably February, anyway. And then, we're only about two or three months out from an actual full election, and at which point, now we've expended all this money to then expend more money on the next election. So, unfortunately, it falls at a time where fiscally, it's definitely a concern.
The other thing is, I sent, I heard your response on splitting up meetings before between night and day. I got that from Liz, and I responded to her. I still think it needs to be considered. So, you, in your email to me, pretty much said that it's not going to be discussed any further. So, my question is, can I get that on the warrant at the town meeting?
As far as changing the time with it?
Would that be appropriate?
I don't think so. Every board and committee has the ability to set their own schedule.
So, how do we get that changed?
The Board would have to approve it, and right now, like, it didn't seem like there was any reason to do that. We never got any attendance at night. Mr. Trainer can attest to that.
Well, then, how does the town... Because there's a number of people I've talked to that have a problem with daytime at work. Majority of the people in town work daytime, and they can't attend meetings. So, how does that... How do we get that movement, I guess?
No one attended when they were held in the evenings.
That was just... How many meetings did you have at...
All of them for, like, almost eight years plus, probably going back longer than I've been here, so like, 10 years, 12 years?
How many people come to this meeting? One, there's two of us here.
Today, there's only two, but we've had a lot more attendance in the past. It's also proven to be a cost-savings measure for our hourly employees not having to pay overtime. Anytime we've had consultants come in, Town Council, we're not paying the evening rate, and we've worked on getting the PA system. We have all of our meetings are recorded. We actually partnered with Area 58 to have a bunch of other meetings recorded as well. It just doesn't seem like something, like, why would we go backwards and have less people? But that's just me. I don't have a say in it. But it's also not on the agenda, so I just want to caution everybody before we get too far.
Correct.
We don't want an open meeting law issue.
Correct.
Well, there's a... In the agenda, it says that, you know, other discussions, if you open the discussions up, so I'm trying to discuss it, and I'm not getting very far.
If the Board was so inclined, they could schedule it on an upcoming agenda.
Okay.
That'll be up to them.
Mr. Trainer?
I think you're... You know, I'll say it again, I think it's very short-sighted. You know, the number of hourly people who tend to be here at night is maybe three?
That's not true.
That's not true.
We have had the town accountant appear before us, we've had the town treasurer before us, we've had other members of the town government be here.
Police Department, Fire Department.
Police Department, Fire Department. We've had a number of people who would be put on overtime if we went to that. The other side of it also, as Mrs. Dennehy very clearly pointed out, was is when we have consultants, any experts that come in here, we're saving on that, too. And Mr. Trainer also is present, who also took this pilot program and vehemently supported it afterwards about the fact of the timing for it. So, we actually have historically had more people come to this meeting during this time. The second part of this is, in regards to people showing up for the meeting, unless it isn't an agenda item that they put onto it, and if they did put it on an agenda item, they would show up for it, number one. Number two, with the availability with social media and also with now using this, whether you want to call it social media or not, but having all these meetings videotaped, unlike they were in the past, where they were on a cable program where you had to find the specific time when it was on Area 58 on public access TV, you're able to see it at any time you want, and you can actually pause it, you can rewind it, you can actually see what we say, you can go through the entire discussion. And I think that's valid, because instead of you sitting there taking notes, you actually have a recording of it, albeit that it's not the official recording, as is noted in the beginning of our meetings, that's the minutes. But you also have people's comments and so forth, which would not be reflected in the minutes. So, you have your concerns, like today, that are voiced that way.
May I say something?
Okay.
One thing?
Yes.
There was a thing also when we did discuss the time that was being changed, that if it was a large meeting that needed to be, so people more could come, attendance was going to be up because of a different subject on the agenda, that they would change a time, and there would be an evening time meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And that is exactly the reason I suggested that we have one during the day and you have one at night, alternate, and you can have all your paid people come during the day. If you need the Fire Chief here, you need the architect or the lawyers, they can certainly come during the day to avoid the cost at night. But there is a significant majority in this town that work days and have no voice, and you say, "Look at the video." You look at the video, but what can you do with it? You can listen to it, you can't communicate back and forth between the parties.
Well, I will take to my colleague's...
Very short-sighted on your part, not to try.
As to Mrs. Dennehy's point, before we get into a open meeting law violation, I'm going to begin to shut this down by just saying this. If, and this will prove my point, if somebody was really concerned about something that they saw on the multiple meetings we have a month, then they would come before us, as many people have, with an agenda item through the proper process, and be able to come and speak in front of the Board and bring their concerns here. So, to say that they do not have a voice in this town, as I think is a very highly incorrect statement, and that's my opinion. Mr. Trainer, did you have a comment, sir?
So, can I get this on the agenda for next month, next week, or...
If you go through the proper channels, you can. We'll take a, you know... Mr. Trainer?
Sounds like you should have it on the agenda to at least discuss, so you're not against it, so. I would say that when there was an issue that people were really interested in, the place was packed. I mean, there were times when we had full house here. Most of the time, it's no different than today. It was... The one thing I have heard back from some of the committees, that it makes it tough for them also, like the planning committee, they voiced their concerns that they would like to be able to have a nighttime meeting. like to be able to have a nighttime meeting.
One clarification, though.
Sure.
On the videos...
No.
As I understand, we always had the ability to replay the videos over Area 58 on YouTube, and that's now somehow changed?
That's not what I'm talking about. What I'm talking about prior to going to YouTube and the way that we're using the modern technology back in the day, we actually had it on cable access TV, and those meetings were actually reshown at various times. But you couldn't record them unless you put them on a VCR or something else, you could find the time and everything else. With YouTube now, you can literally sit in your truck and watch it on your tablet or your phone or whatever.
Ability, though.
Correct, correct. But that's my point. So, at least it has that aspect of it, too, so we have that technology out there, so.
I kind of monitored those over the years, and you know, you never got more than 40 people. It's just amazing. Because you go on, teach one, and look and see how many people looked at it.
Correct.
At times, I think I did two or three times. It wasn't good.
Fair enough. All right. Well, any further discussion? Make a motion to be concluding today's Selectmen's meeting and moving into an executive session. In pursuant to Mass General Laws 30A, Section 21A, Purpose 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, re. Executive Information Coordinator, Town Accountant, Police Sergeant. Roll call, vote. Mr. Sides?
Aye.
And Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And you will not be returning to open session?
Will not be returning. That is correct.
Just say the, like, do like the whole spiel about not going back to open.
You ready?
Yes.
Okay. We'll now be adjourning the open session and going into an executive session. We will not be returning to open session. Make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Purpose 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, re. Executive Information Coordinator, Town Accountant, Police Sergeant. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, vote. Mr. Sides?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.